This is Brown.
Here.
Dr. Estrop.
Here.
Mrs. Houston.
Here.
Mrs. Tackett.
Here.
Mr. Rue.
Here. Senior Manager.
Yes, Commission, we have one work session item tonight, and that is a public safety facility needs overview and about the new county jail. And with us tonight is Jenny Hutchinson, the county administrator, to talk about the project.
This automatically, yes, it does automatically. I apologize, I am not Sheriff Clark. He was supposed to be here, but he had another engagement, so last minute I am filling in. And this presentation will not be nearly as good as if he was here, but I will try to go through this and answer any questions that you have as much as I can. If not, I will get back to you. But the public safety building that we currently know is downtown here, and it was built in the late 70s, early 80s. And when it was built, it was built, it was like one of the kind. It was the type of facility that was prevalent in that time. Multi-levels, we have three floors where we house the inmates. It was originally, it houses about 160 inmates. Currently, we are always averaging over 200, so it's definitely over what it is meant to be, which is why we are in the process of researching newer facilities and what the county needs to do in order to make sure that we are able to house inmates that are needed to be housed. All right, so when we were looking at a public safety facility, we wanted to make sure that it was safe, secure, and sustainable. These are some of the current conditions of our jail. The way it is structured is that the admin offices are on like the first and second floor with the cells being on the third, fourth, and fifth. And the inmates have quickly determined that if you clog the toilets, it will flood the offices underneath. And as you can see here, this is a common occurrence. We just recently had one in the beginning of the year that moved our sheriff's office out of there for about three months as we had to completely gut the entire office space and redevelop it. This shows water just streaming down. So not only is that a common occurrence, but we have over $3 to $5 million worth of improvements that need to be made immediately. If we are not going to proceed moving forward, we are going to need to invest in that. And that includes the new roof, includes new locks for the jails, the plaza, as many as you have know if you've ever been up on heading into either the jail or the city. Police, the plaza is definitely in need of repair, and some other just upkeep items. And that does nothing to address the overcrowding. We would not be able to remodel the current jail and gain space. So no matter what we did to that building, we would not be able to house any more inmates. So this is kind of our current situations, and when we talk about the overcapacity, we, the jail is now kind of being more used as a mental health facility and dealing with people who are overdosing or on opioids rather than housing those that have broke the law. Of course, some of those would fall into that category, but it's really need, become a space where we need to try to have some programming to address these mental health and drug addictions. And also, we're not as equipped to handle the amount of female population that we have that are now entering the jail. So we had a feasibility study that was performed by DLZ. The first study occurred in 2017, 18, around that period. And then we faced COVID, and then we've had, since then, we've had updates to this study twice. And it has identified that we have a need for a facility that can house up to 450 inmates, and that will get us through the next 30 years. Also included in the study was other options as well. Do we need, can we renovate the current facility? And just some other options. So that study, throughout that study, we determined that the most feasible solution would be to build a new facility rather than try to invest in the current building that we have. And then this kind of shows, when they did the study, they looked at our average length of stay, looked at the types of inmates that are coming into our facility, and the cost per inmate. And another concern that we have is that it is safe for our officers, our citizens, and the inmates as well. Officer safety is a huge concern. The way the jail was designed, the current jail was designed, it's multi-level, and there's not a clear line of sight for the corrections officers that are in there to look and see every inmate. The newer facilities are built kind of as a pod where there's a central desk that can see everybody that's in that pod. That is not our current facility. There's a lot of dead spaces that we have to be aware of. And because of that, we have to have more corrections officers per inmate just to make sure that we have that safety for those corrections officers. Public safety is a huge issue. There, as I mentioned, there's over 200 inmates that are in, currently in the facility. It's housed for 160. So what that means is if we bring somebody in who really should be in the facility, who committed a more aggressive crime, we might have to let somebody out that is more of a misdemeanor. And that creates our public safety issue that we're facing. We would easily put in 20 or so more inmates in there right now, but just due to trying to correct that officer safety and the inmate safety, we have to make those decisions. And it's constantly a discussion between the sheriff and the judges on how we are going to determine who gets released and who needs to make sure that they are in there. We will say that those that need to be in there are in there. And then we also have the issue of those being transferred to prison. They're really on the will of the state as to when they call them up. We can call them and say, hey, we have five inmates that need to be transferred to prison, and they'll say, well, we can take one right now. And the law forces to house those other four until they call us and tell us that they can take more. Inmate safety isn't an issue. You're putting 200 people in a facility that is regulated for 160. There's going to be constant fights. There's going, you're not able to separate the different types of crimes, the felonies from the misdemeanors. And that creates an inmate safety issue. We also are having to, because of that, a lot of trips to the hospital, which is the county's responsibility to pay for those trips to the hospital if they are involved in a fight or anything like that. This kind of talks about the different types of inmates today. It's kind of separated into the three, the bad, the fewest number. And these are what the current jail is designed for. Those are like your felonies. And then you have the addicted who are likely less harmful, and we're not designed for that. We have no programming space to try to address those. And they might just need two, three weeks to get started in a program before they move out. But we're not able to get that initial first two weeks started for them. And then you have the mental health. And like I said before, we're not designed for that as well. We have no programming. We tried to do the best we can with the partners in the community, but that is a lacking issue that we have right now. in the community, but that is a lacking issue that we have right now. And all three of these inmates are in the same pods. So you've got, you know, maybe a murderer or somebody housed with somebody who has a mental health issue and got off their meds. And that's not how, you know, they should be housed. They should be able to separate those. Insecure. So the facility I mentioned is actually, this was, 432 is the 80% rule. That's part of the study, but the facility is, will be designed for 450 beds. It's, the square footage is about 130,000 to 40,000 square feet, and that will include all of the sheriff's offices. So include the detective, road patrol, and of course, the corrections office admin. The facility, the study recommended at least 10 acres and be in the city center because the sheriff's office is required to sit in the city limits. And based on our 2026 bid, that is if we went out next year, it's about $85 to $100 million to construct. We have been doing some tours of similar facilities. We have gone to Warren County. We've gone to Green County and Koshockton County. Those are all facilities that have just recently been built, and they're using the new model, which is the single-story with the pod-type environment. So those are kind of what we have been looking at and kind of trying to model the new facility. And these are some of the pictures that we, you know, of the newer facilities. So those are the basics that we have. I went over that already. The desired location. So here, we have, time this presentation was, we did not have an actual contract on it, but this is the, we do have a contract now on this property. It's south of 70 on 72. It has easy access to 70. It's centrally located. An important part for the sheriff's office is they do the entire county, not just, you know, the north, south, or the central. They need to be able to quickly hit west, New Carlisle or over on, you know, South Vienna. So this, based upon the average time, this is central location for them. And it's approximately 30 acres, which would give us the ability to expand if needed in 20, 30 years. And this has been annexed into the city already. And we want to make sure it's sustainable. So the model that we are looking for is, it's about $100 million. The county does have some reserves and some funds that we can use from One Ohio, which was about 15 million, I'm sorry, 2 million. The 15 million is what we would hope to get from the state capital fund. So that leaves us about $83 million that we are looking for a sales tax levy, which is a half percent that is on the ballot in November. And that will be a 20-year period. If we are able to generate enough funds to pay off the remainder of the bonds, the commissioners can cancel the tax early. And that's kind of what it says here. So the funds collected, which would be about $10 million, will be used to pay the annual principal and interest payment for the bond. And just kind of give an idea, we've been using the $100, the half percent increase will be 50 cents. And that is very brief, and it's not as detailed as what sheriff would have done, but...
Thank you, thank you. So back to the corrections officers. Do you think in this facility, it'll require less correction officers than the one you operate now?
What if we are looking at the same amount? If we bring 200 in, we would need less corrections officer, but because the facility will house up to 450, which, you know, we do not expect day one to be 450, we could build that up as well.
And then I think the one thing that I've heard in some of the other presentations is the offering for rehabilitation services to the inmates that, they're really only recourse for the ones that need to be, have further assistance and rehabilitation. Our facility does not have that. Therefore, it's basically their process and released back into the same environment in which they came out, and that causes more hardship. Am I right? So this is one of the, one of the advantages of having a larger facility is for services that we cannot offer right now. Is that right?
That is correct.
I think you said something like that, but I wanted to highlight that again.
Yes.
And then you said an interesting fact that I think needs to be, is it state, it's state legislature, it's state law that says that the jail needs to be in our city?
The sheriff's office.
Excuse me, the sheriff's office. Okay.
Yeah.
Right. Right. I think that's, the transfer to prison, have we had a situation where there was, we could not transfer individuals in a timely way, and it caused real problems downtown?
No. No. The issue we have is that we have four or five prisoners that need to be transferred to state prison, but they do not have any openings. So they're still in our facility, which then not enables us to, you know, arrest anybody and keep them and process them.
Thank you. I know other commissioners have comments or questions. Commissioner Tagg.
Thank you for being here. I'd like to share this story. When I talked to the citizens of Springfield and experience I had doing ride-alongs. So I've done two ride-alongs with the sheriff's department and two with Springfield Police Department. There was this incident last year with the Springfield Police Department where they were called on the West End for a trespass. We get there, they arrest him, we bring him to the jail, and it was very eye-opening to me when the Springfield Police Department had to let him go because there was no room in the jail. And he went and he offended that night, and then the following week. And I thought, from even just thinking about to the other previous ride-alongs, about call times, about how they have to prioritize the calls. And if we have these repeat calls all the time as we're over capacity in this jail and letting people out, or we're paying other counties to take our inmates for $90 a day, it was kind of putting that into perspective for me on the importance of doing something with the jail here. So thanks for talking about it.
I think an important point that Sheriff Clark has been making is that our weakest link right now in our fight against crime is our jail. So like you said, we can arrest them, and it might be something where it was a domestic and they just kind of need time apart. And then we bring them down into the jail, and we have to let them go because there's no room. And that doesn't give those parties a time to kind of decompress.
And I thought when we had the presentation, which, thank you to the county for inviting us out there at the fairgrounds, and the guy presented his findings and how he described it as that three-door system. I don't know if you can speak to that, but I think that was important as well. If you could go into a little more detail about that.
Those are the three types of doors, or the three types of criminals that we have. It's like the bad, the fewest number. These are your worst, these are your murderers, which is what our jail was designed for. And then you have the addicted and behavioral ones. So those are the three doors that he was referring to. And we're not, we are not designed for these two other.
Right, right. And the more complex a jail needs to be these days compared to what it was built for. And we see that in downtown Springfield and in Springfield as we deal with a homeless crisis and what that looks like, the increased need for mental health. So that is another plus on redesigning our jail.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. I had the opportunity a month or so ago to actually walk through the jail with Sheriff Clark because I wanted to understand the current condition. I wanted to understand why you're putting this on the levy. And I was floored at the current condition of the jail. Not only the parts where they house inmates, but the offices, the plaza when you go up there, and just the magnitude of the repairs that are needed just to get back to almost normal. And that doesn't even get into addressing the capacity. I remember, for example, some of the parts that you would have needed, that you need to order for doors are made by companies that aren't even in business anymore, right?
That's correct. Our Buildings and Grounds Department have become experts at trying to fix those blocks.
Right. Which has to be exponentially more expensive.
There he is. You saved me. I didn't get as much detail.
Sheriff Clark, welcome.
No, I was just saying, I had the opportunity to walk through the current facility with you, and I was floored at the condition. Some of the parts that you need to order are made by companies not even in business anymore.
Correct.
Making it exponentially more expensive, and that is not going to stop anytime soon. Oh, no, you're good. I'm sorry. I just have one more thing. The last thing, no one wants to pay more taxes. Like, we all just got our property tax bills that have probably gone up due to houses being sold and other issues. There are a lot of levies on the ballot this year, but the way that this is presented through a sales tax makes it very fair for everyone in the county. Anyone that passes through Clark County and buys something, it will go towards this facility. So I just want everyone to take a minute to consider that.
Sheriff Clark, she went through the whole presentation, but I'm sure there's about three points you'd like to emphasize from your voice. Does that be accurate?
Yes. And again, just let me apologize for my tardiness. You know, I had some things going on today, and I'm running a little bit behind today. But I do just want to kind of point out a few things. The Clark County Jail was built in 1997. It cost $8.3 million. And that was due to a federal directive towards the commission and the county administrator.
Eighty-seven?
Oh.
Eighty-seven.
Seventy-seven.
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 We all were wrong.
See, it's been a long day. It's been a long day. It was, it was started in 77 and opened in 1980. So according to the state of Ohio, our housing capacity is 167 today. Our, our capacity was 204. Obviously, that raises a lot of problems with, when you're putting 204 individuals inside a facility that's designed to hold a maximum of 167. I've been here 28 years, and I can tell you that 20 years I've been here, the Clark County Jail has never passed a minimum jail standard that I'm aware of. There, we're governed by 51/20 Ohio Administrative Code, and there are 172 points that we have to comply with annually. And we're inspected every year by Ohio Department of Corrections. Last year, we were compliant with everything except 14. Four of those had to do with, you know, maintenance, some maintenance issues and some policy procedure, things that have been corrected. But 10 of them had to do with the physical structure of the, of the building itself. And a lot of it has to do with the space that is required. We house, our pods are designed to house 12 inmates. For every 12 inmates, I'm supposed to have one toilet, one sink, one wash basin, one shower. We are putting upwards of 18 to 20 people inside this pod. So, you know, in a facility that is designed to accommodate 12 people, we're trying to almost double that. And of course, it creates tension problems. It creates, you know, it's small spaces, so they don't have any place to go to cool off or to separate themselves. Creates health issues because, you know, when you, when you try to get, you know, that many people inside of a room, we have sanitary problems. And we've had bug issues at the jail because of the overcrowded problem. And that's the biggest thing. And the, you know, the health and the maintenance of the, of the facility. My corrections officers don't want to go to work every day and fight. And that's what they're having to do. They're having to fight their way because, you know, these inmates don't want to be there. I mean, they're in jail. They don't want to be there. They really don't want to be there when we're having them sleep on the floor. And, you know, they're in there with people that they don't get along with. So it's constant fight every day, and they're fighting for, for, you know, food, and they're fighting for TV time, and they're fighting for, you know, whatever, whatever they, it's always a fight. So, you know, we need to get, we need to get some sort of space where we can classify people. Outside of that, you know, 167 beds, you know, 204 inmates today, or 260 inmates, I can't remember what it was when I left. But we're just over 200 inmates. And we're housing the worst of the worst. So when we look at people who are committing lower-end misdemeanors, you know, nonviolent felonies, there's a really good chance that they may never see the inside of a jail cell. And that's not because law enforcement in the county doesn't want to do their job. It's not because prosecutors aren't trying to prosecute, and judges aren't wanting to prosecute. We just don't have any place to put them. Yeah, so we are, we have reserved the space in the Clark County Jail for the people who are shooting each other, stabbing each other, or committing the home invasions and the robberies and the burglaries, the worst of the worst crimes that we see. So the problem with that is, is when we don't address the lower-end stuff, we as a society approve it. We literally say as a society that we are okay with what's going on. When we have theft problem up on Beckville Avenue, and I could tell you that the majority of theft on Beckville Avenue is not, not reported to law enforcement because they know, the business centers know that we can't do anything about it. Someone gets arrested today, they may or may not see the inside of a jail cell. It depends what the population is, but more than likely, they're going to go through the process. They're going to get ordered into court. They're going to be arraigned, and then they're going to go to trial in six to eight months. And all the while, they're still stealing, and they're still out, you know, doing bad things. And, you know, and there's nothing, there's really, at that point, not much we can do about. You know, we just don't have the space. But when we take these people and we don't, we don't hold them accountable for the lower-end stuff, we are inoculating them to a criminal justice system. So we can't be surprised when the misdemeanor theft turns into car theft, and car theft turns into a burglary, and the burglary turns into armed confrontation with the homeowner. And that, that's what's happening here. You know, we have problems with the juvenile population in Springfield that are, that are stealing cars and shooting each other. And a lot of it has to do with because, you know, we have to hold them accountable when they do wrong. You know, a lot of people have kids, and anybody who has kids knows that if you let your kids get away with something, they're going to try it again. And they're going to push your limits, and they're going to push until they find out where the limit is. Well, criminal justice is no different. When you have somebody that you arrest and you don't put in jail, and they're not held accountable to the standard that they need to be held accountable, they're going to continue to commit crimes until they find out where that limit is. But where do we, where do we draw the line? And at some point, we as a society have to say that we've had enough, and that we want to take criminal justice seriously, and we want to start locking people up and holding criminals accountable in Clark County. And right now, Clark County Jail is the weakest link in the criminal justice system. We need a new facility. We need to be able to have the capacity and the ability to hold criminals accountable for the deeds that they do. And, but we need the, we need the public's help to accomplish that. We need some financial help to accomplish that. And like Commissioner Houston said, nobody likes to be taxed anymore. I don't want to be taxed anymore. You know, we're all taxed to death. But a half percent to me is well worth the security of knowing I can send my wife, my daughter to Walmart, do shopping without me having to go as an armed escort. Thank you for your time.
Doctor Estrop.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate your comments. I sit on behalf of the Commission on the Criminal Justice Council. And what I have heard repeatedly is what you've just talked about, Sheriff. The frustration of the police and the sheriff's office, the prosecutors, the judges, with their inability to engage in appropriate application of the criminal justice system because the jail doesn't have capacity. And you're right, we see it unfortunately throughout all of Clark County, this escalation of criminal behavior because there are no consequences for the misdemeanor offenses. So I wish you the very best of luck in your campaign. And I understand the problem, and I hope the people of Clark County will understand and support a solution to the problem. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Doctor Estrop.
I do have a comment. I just wanted to say, a few years ago, I had gone down to the county to do QPR training, which is the suicide prevention. And while I was there, we were providing that to your staff as well as to the inmates. And while I was there, just seeing those, I get it, right? You commit a crime, you go to jail. Everybody gets that, right? But we often have, forget what happened to that person that got them to that point of committing these crimes, right? And so while doing that training, the looks of desperation in people's eyes, but talking about such a sensitive subject and bringing up the mental health issues, you know, they were just started to talk, like, well, I actually have meds, but I can't get my meds because there's nobody here to pass my meds. You know, that to me was just crazy to me because what are we doing? We're just, again, we're going to keep ourselves in that cycle of that recidivism and all of those things. Because if this man is in jail, and before he's on meds, now he's completely off of them. He hasn't had a doctor's and before he's on meds, now he's completely off of them. He hasn't had a doctor's visit, can't get refills, and now I'm sure he'll be right back in a few more days. And so I just really wanted to encourage, I, I hear everybody with the taxes, right? But if you actually go into that jail, if you have, know anybody that's been in jail, because I'm not going to sit here and act like I've never been inside the county until I did that QPR training. I've gone to the jail to visit many a people, right? Um, it, it is, it's crazy in there. Like, I don't even have words for it. So I just encourage everybody to research this. Look into that tax and so that you have a full understanding when you're going in to vote for this levy and not just saying, oh, I'm not voting for it because I don't want a new tax. Really do some research before you make your decision, please.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just real briefly.
Thank you.
So to your point, you are one hundred percent correct. Um, and rehabilitation correction, rehabilit, uh, correction is the easy part. Rehabilitation is the difficult part. And that's another thing that we are focused on with a new facility is the, is the rehabilitation. Right now, there are two classrooms and one office that we use for, for rehabilitation inside the Clark County Jail. Um, and that's not enough for a hundred and sixty-seven inmates, let alone two hundred and four. So, um, a new facility will be, will be based on, um, you know, a, a lot of rehabilitation to try to get a recidivism rate of thirty-two and a half percent down to where it should be and hopefully in the teens. Um, but it takes, it takes, um, the rehabilitation side of rehabilitation and correction in order to be a successful corrections facility. Thank you.
Do you have the comments from Commissioner?
Thank you for getting here. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
And, uh, we wish you well, for sure.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn this informal meeting?
So moved.
Second.
They moved to second. A clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Brown.
Here.
Dr. Estrop.
Yes.
Mrs. Houston.
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett.
Yes.
Mr. Rue.
Yes, I think Commissioner Tackett asked, and this is a good question. Is there a place people can go online, find more information about?
If you go to our website, there's a, um, a tab you can.
To the Clark County?
Yes, Clark County, Ohio website. Um, it's called Hot Topics. You click on there, there's several different one, one of them being the Public Safety topic.
Are you speaking anywhere else publicly?
There are a few coming up. Um, where they are off the top of my head, I'm not sure. Uh, so smaller groups.
Okay.
But, uh,
New Carlisle.
New Carlisle, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the formal meeting for city commissions called to order, or call the roll?
Mrs. Brown.
Here.
Dr. Estrop.
Here.
Mrs. Houston.
Here.
Mrs. Tackett.
Here.
Mr. Rue.
Here. Please stand for the invocation and pledge.
This, this month marks Cancer Awareness Month. And, uh, I'd like to have a moment of silence for those who have, uh, gone through caregiving to cancer, uh, patients have lost family members to cancer, had friends that go through, like to have a moment of silence.
Is there a motion to approve minutes from last meeting?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. A clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Brown.
Yes.
Dr. Estrop.
Yes.
Mrs. Houston.
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett.
Yes.
Mr. Rue.
Yes. The City Commission remains committed to creating a conducive environment for constructive and productive dialogue and engagement in our community. Those wishing to speak needs to fill out a comment card and provide their name and address for the record. They'll do that and also pres, um, present a state issued driver's license uh, to fill out the card and be able to speak at the meeting. Comment cards will be accepted fifteen minutes after, uh, the start of the legislative meeting. Those who have determined to provide false information will not be permitted to speak at this meeting or the next commission meeting. We're committed to, uh, having this environment where people can share thoughts and ideas and concerns. Commissioners and staff are listening, taking notes and researching information relative to each of your comments. While honoring First Amendment principles, the City Commission reserves the right to regulate the time, place and manner in which public comments, uh, uh, to ensure that meetings, uh, remain orderly, respectful and conducive for constructive dialogue, dialogue. While we fully respect First Amendment rights, all individuals and disruptions of any kind that impedes the progress of our meeting will not be tolerated. Should any individual be escorted or asked to leave, uh, due to disruptive behavior on three separate occasions, they'll be notified that they're considered trespass from, uh, further mission meetings. After the public comment period time, city commissioners may respond to matters brought forth during the public comment period. And we'll also direct the city manager and staff to answer questions posed during the public comment period. If a question requires additional research, the city manager and staff, they can follow up with the individual in the next several days and answer the, have the answers to those questions on the website. Before I call the first person, on Sunday, we are honoring, uh, one of our bigger servants in this community. And, uh, she's going to be presented, uh, this is Mary Ann Nave. She'll be presented a, uh, proclamation. Commissioner Tackett will be there to present that. We'll be out of town, otherwise I would be there. Uh, but Mary Ann Nave has ran our community beautification, uh, committee since its inception. So it'd be sixty years. And, uh, and she is, uh, she is one of a kind and she has such a servant's heart and we're just really glad to be able to honor her. I just wanted to say something tonight publicly, how much we have truly appreciated her dedication, devotion and longevity to this committee. She's really made it something special. So uh, we're looking forward to honoring her on Sunday. I believe the several city staff members will be there. Have some refreshments for her and, uh, and it's at two PM Sunday at the courtyard. So if you'd like to come and celebrate Mary Ann's contribution to our community, please come and do so. Okay, we're going to go into public comments. We'll start with Gary Armstrong.
I've been looking at everything that I've said and heard you guys say for the last three years. Uh, cause in December, when I came in to turn in the former commissioner that was beaten at twenty-three because he built the apartment for units, nobody paid any attention to me but two people. And most of this is what I'm talking about is integrity, which we need in here. Integrity is honesty. And the only two people that asked me for my number was Tracy and Crystal. It told me a lot about who really wants honesty and integrity. Actually, either one of them, I would say, if you got three more people and made either one of them mayor, I know, uh, Crystal's leaving, but you'd be well ahead because you have honest people with a heart and soul. And you haven't got a heart and soul when this old man comes in, says, this guy built this four unit and I'm showing you three, or four mailboxes on his house, three apartments that he's got advertised online and three years you've done nothing. You have done nothing for me. And I see what you've done to other people. They come in here with concerns about, uh, the lady Skinner on, uh, Western Avenue. You, you dismiss them. You don't listen to them as caring individuals and pull them in like I would. I would sit down and talk to them and tell them the possibilities that what I can and can't do. Instead of give people lip service that is not truthful, caring, it is just BS. And you've given me that. And I've looked at this, the BS that came out of these hotels. And when I've looked at the last three years and looked at the appraisals, that is, when you have told us, six of you, six of you said, I had a hundred and forty-one rooms. You didn't have a hundred and forty-one room. You knew that. And you, you put these kids that work in these departments because you've brought them in and colluded in your little criminal activity of getting false appraisals. When I asked, was that friend that, uh, is from Toledo, used to know it was Toledo's Dublin? Well, no, that wasn't true, was it? Because the appraisals were done out of Toledo. Then to backtrack, you had reviews done out of Dublin. That is a lie to cover up that you use federal money and pumped up the, uh, appraisal to be worth one point seven million for one hundred and forty-one rooms? Well, if it's worth that at one forty-one and you only had thirty-eight rooms, that's why you tore them down so quick because it's called a cover up of the crime scene. And that is prosecuting. You can be prosecuted for that because you pumped up the value of junk hotels and you got fraudulent.
Ken Baron Sealing.
I'll continue next week.
Yep. Ken Baron. Sealing.
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm here tonight on behalf of the motorcycle club that I have a, a long history with. Uh, it's our forty-seventh annual toy run. The nineteenth of October. I want to invite everybody here, get on your Harleys, Hondas, Suzukis, it don't matter. Come on out, bring a toy or ten bucks and do it for the kids of Clark County. Lots of people know about the Toy Run and we've been doing it for forty-seven continuous year. Pray for good weather. I mean, I don't want it to rain. But I've been on it when it snowed. So, uh, I'm just here to remind everybody that's coming up and to apologize beforehand, anybody that wants to do business between probably one o'clock and three o'clock anywhere on Main Street because it's going to be, it's going to take to commit to sit there while, uh, the, a bunch of leather lace and love go by. Keep in mind, we're doing it for the kids as we always have. And, uh, we thank the community for their support. I mean, we, the bottom line is, you know, we're started out with seventeen motorcycles on the first, on the first toy run, seventeen. And, uh, I think that we were just shy of four thousand motorcycles uh, at one of ours. And that takes a lot of logistics to move from Midway uh, to VFW where we started in Midway to the Clark County Fair. Uh, just be patient with them and know that, uh, three thousand plus kids on past events have had Christmas morning because of that. And, uh, we appreciate it and we appreciate the, uh, the city recognizing the highway hikers and declaring the, the third Sunday in every October, that's when we do it. It's always the third Sunday in October and it's kickstands up at one o'clock sharp. Uh, we appreciate you recognizing us for, uh, what we've done, you know, and, uh, here's looking forward to fifty. And I'm going to go sit down somewhere. I've had fifty of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Diane Daniels.
No prepared statement tonight. Just a little PSA. A hundred and twenty-six days. What's in a hundred and twenty-six days? February the sixth. That's the end date for GPS. For all of our Haitians. What's your plan? I've had a couple come up to the shop where I work over the last few weeks, asking me to buy their bikes. They're feeling the pressure. What do you think it's going to be like on February the sixth when all the money is ripped wet? It's not going to be pleasant. In the last two weeks, two and a half weeks, I've lost three friends. They've left. They've left town. Two individuals and a family. They've taken their jobs, their income tax provided to the city and they've left. That's three in the last two and a half weeks. I can count nine in the last six months. By January, that number will increase to another three. Their homes are out for sale and they're leaving. They're not coming back. Those are people who pay income taxes. The sole reason they're leaving is the handling of the Haitian situation solely. They feel uncomfortable. It's unsafe and they don't prefer to shop in Springfield. So they're going somewhere else. You should take that into consideration. Next year when your budget is in the red. And I suggest you go ahead and start making inroads with the Haitian, uh, HBA for money if you need it because you're going to go begging. But don't ask the federal government because I've already informed my senators and my congressmen not to give you not one penny.
Terry Atkins.
Good evening. Um, a couple of things I brought up a few meetings ago. The new van service operating. I was behind one today. Still no numbers. So if you have a problem, you need to report it. You have no idea who it was, what it was. Um, I do know for a fact it is state law that any livery vehicle, buses, transportation is supposed to stop, turn your flashers on at all railroad tracks. The one I saw today just zipped right on across East Street. No flashers, nothing. Um, I do know if the wipers are on and this is, you know, to me it's kind of petty, but it is law. Wipers on, lights on. You know, everybody in here knows it was wipers on today. No lights on, on that vehicle. What number was it? I have no idea. You know, it's just the little things. And then you want, you're pushing this for the safety aspect. And there's two items that, you know, it, it's been known for a while and nothing's been done. And, you know, go to Walmart, buy a couple fifty cent numbers. No big deal, stick on them vans. And it's just, you know, I saw a picture the other day, one of them with the left front fender crashed. I have no idea who did it, what did it, how it happened, but still. And, you know, that's costing somebody money. I mean, it just, something needs to be done, guys, before something serious happens. And you, you know, can't say it's any one of you guys sitting up there that you're top of the heap. You're, you're going to catch whatever, you know, it's kind of the way it works. You need to do something before something serious happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Estrop.
I have here an executive summary. It's a document from March twenty-first to this executive summary states the plans the United Nations has for migration replacement. The United States is a member of the United States. And the United Nations have been concerned about declining and aging population, especially from the years two thousand to two thousand and fifty. They want to maintain a certain number of working age citizens in developed countries. It explains how many immigrants are needed in each country annually. The United States would need roughly four hundred eighty-five thousand eight hundred immigrants this year according to their parameters. Here's their little chart. Um, they also state it would help to increase the upper working age limit to seventy-five. I often wonder if Oakland did any research before signing Springfield up to be a welcoming city in two thousand and fourteen. What are the current mayor's views on this immigration replacement? Um, there are new updated forms. This is just in two thousand is when they started actually putting numbers to it. When will we be expecting another influx in Springfield? Um, last meeting, I asked for information about a topic on the agenda. The person who answered told me it was put on the website on Friday for us to be able to look at before. Do you feel Friday evening to Tuesday evening is sufficient time to appropriately research each agenda item? When does the board get this agenda? Is it also Friday evening before the Tuesday meeting? Who researches the items on the agenda? Do you all research each item? Or do you each take a certain one and then brief each other on your research topic before vote? How many hours are spent researching? How much research has been done on the five C data center that was approved December twentieth of two thousand and twenty-four? I see the one hundred percent activatement for fifteen years was approved on it. And we citizens are, have a thirty percent property appetite. Did anyone research how data centers are affecting a community? Did they bring to your attention that electricity demands will increase and how many? Did they bring to your attention that electricity demands will increase and how many? And how they may cause power issues? That electricity prices will skyrocket. Did they also tell you that our water sources will be strained and may deplete our local aquifers? Our precious waters will be used to cool their systems and discharge, could be discharged into local water bodies, including the pollutants they carry. They may contain biocides, corrosion inhibitors and other chemicals and leach into the groundwater or surface water. Do you know what kind of cooling system they will be using? So we know how high is Springfield's risk of this? On the city of Springfield.
Thank you for your comments. That's the end of your time. Melissa Skinner.
Um, I just have a few questions this evening. One being, um, how to get calls back from certain departments in the city? Um, and how long is it acceptable to wait? Um, before calling back? Um, it's been weeks and months. Um, permits is one instance. Um, everybody else, I believe in my book has called me back. Um, I know when you get on a list with somebody in a department, it may not be pleasant to have to call the person back. But until we get an answer, I'm going to continue to call because that's the only way to obviously get your voice heard. So anybody who can help with that, I'd like that information this evening. Um, number two would be, um, what is the city's plans if the jail is built? What's going to happen to our police department? Where are they going to be located? Um, is that building going to stay there? I heard that it wasn't. Um, not sure, just asking. What's the plans for our police department? Um, as far as the jail presentation, I'm sure my opinion is not popular, but I'll state it anyways. Um, back in two thousand and twenty-one, there was a grant that was presented to the administrator who presented here this evening that I was told and it's been confirmed by a couple of people that has brought it to my attention. So I'm fairly certain to say that it's probably true. And that particular person would not write off on the grant. Um, almost worth nine hundred thousand dollars I was told. That grant would have paid for new locks in the jail. That's one of their big problems that's on their list. The other one would have been all new floors through the jail. That's on their list of five. Um, the front would have been taken care of the steps and the ramp. That's number three out of five on their list that was presented at Shawnee on their list. Um, and they would have added all new windows. Those were four big major purchases in that grant that would have been taken care of. Um, also new piping going in, not on the grant, but new piping, if they could get grinders in those pipes, that would help solve. Um, hopefully some of the problems of the inmates thinking it's okay to overflow the toilets, especially into the sheriff's office or any administrative office there. So, um, that could have been an investment. Just sort of wondering how much maintenance? If we're repeating our cycle again from seventy-seven and it's two thousand and twenty-five, here we are repeating the same cycle to build a new facility because of maintenance issues for one. Um, so that's a concern. Um, probably last, if I have enough time real quick, is did any commissioner on the seat question the ruling of the gentleman for carrying a gun into a loaded gun into our courthouse? Um, I don't care who it was. I don't care what nationality, but that's a scary thought.
Shane Ramey. All right, there's fine.
How you doing commissioners and everybody? Um, my concern is, um, they want eighty-three million dollars for a new jail and we don't have no rec centers for the kids. We have nothing, no rehabilitation homes for the homeless people. I mean, if you guys want to spend eighty-three million dollars, I, I, I wish it didn't go into a bunch of criminals and I'm not downplaying them or anything like that, but it kind of concerns me that, um, you have a sheriff here talking about today, he's scared to go to Walmart. Um, you had, um, him also explain that how the judges and prosecutors and everybody just wants to lock people up and they think that the incarceration is the way, but incarceration is going to increase if you don't have, uh, a clear path to prevent crime. We got children running around here with nothing to do. When they get out of school, there's no after school programs, there's no mentors out there. We have eighty-three, you want eighty-three million dollars for a jail? A jail? We got all these problems in the community. We got potholes in the street. Yellow Springs Street is still messed up the other half and I can go on and on to all the other things we can do with eighty-three million dollars. Instead of building a new jail for criminals to make it comfortable. Prison is not supposed to be comfortable. Jails is not supposed to be comfortable. If you commit crimes, this is what comes with it. It's nothing about supposed to be comforting people. And my own sheriff talking about, he's scared to go to Walmart. I go to Walmart every night. And then you got people talking about, oh yeah, we visited jails. When is the last time you walked through the community? Have you been to the communities? Have you talked to the people out on the street? I don't hear none of that. Why don't you go out there and see what's causing a problem with these kids? Go to their households, go to their schools, see what's going on, talk to them. They'll tell you. There's nothing for them to do. They walk around here and they, and they don't know what to do. They easily influenced by other kids that lost their way. And if we got eighty-three million dollars to spend on a jail, we can spend eighty-three million dollars on rec centers. Again, rehabilitate these houses they keep tearing down. Why tear a house down? You could have kids, the juveniles that y'all say messed up, y'all can use them to fix those houses up for homeless people or make them low income houses for the city. There's a whole bunch of stuff we can do for eighty-three million dollars instead of taking care of criminals. And that's just all I have to say for tonight, but I just want y'all to take that in consideration because the city is in a crisis. And you can't fix a crisis by keep incarceration, incarceration, incarceration. What are they going to do when they get out? Where's the reentry programs at? What is going on? Eighty-three million dollars and all we care about is just keep locking kids up. Kids, first time offenders getting ten years. What's going on here? How's he going to learn? Where's the probation department? You talking about that crowd, if they, if the jail's overcrowded, do something like house arrest or something. They don't have to be released back out on the street. And I yield the rest of my time. Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you. Michael Morris.
Um, four things tonight. First one, I want to make sure that the public, including the commissioners, are invited to the Johnny Lidle statue dedication. Unfortunately, we had to move the date. Going to be this Sunday at the exact same time of the CBC. Uh, unavoidable, we didn't realize that when we did it, we had already changed it once, but uh, the public is invited. It'll be happening in front of the Clark State Performing Arts Center, actually in between Performing Arts Center and Bailey uh, Hollenbeck, uh, building at two o'clock. In the event of inclement weather, it doesn't look like it's going to be, it'll be moved inside to the lobby of the Performing Arts Center. So, everybody in the public's invited, but wanted to make sure that commissioners were aware of it as well. Secondly, I agree with what the gentleman just said and tying it into what, uh, Sheriff Clark had to say. It is the small things. And one of the games, if you will, that my wife and I play is how many expired tags can we find while we drive somewhere in Springfield? It's epidemic. Little things, folks. Lots of them out there. And I know that the police force is, you know, strapped with, uh, um, not a lot of extra officers around, but it is the small things. And again, to what the gentleman said, you know, you let, uh, you let people get away with things and, uh, and the other thing I don't agree with is, I don't think you can do anything about it, but temporary tags that aren't on the back of the vehicle. They're taped in the window. And what do you know, nine times out of ten, they're taped in a very dark tinted window. Can't see it. Just like the gentleman said with the, uh, the city bus, you know, how are you supposed to identify the bus? Well, you can't. Uh, you can't identify the car. So I, I think that's something that, uh, that we need to pay attention to. Last thing that I'll say is I was going to bring it up tonight in, in my comments, but Rob, thank you for saying it. I'm going to be sixty years old here in a couple of months. Mary Ann Nave has done that job my entire life. In nineteen sixty-four, Lady Bird Johnson created that, uh, community beautification. I will bet you that not only are we one of the few original ones that are still around, but nobody else in the United States of America had one person run it for its entire existence. That's amazing, totally amazing. So wish her well. I actually served as a judge a couple of times um, for a few years, uh, with the CBC, but, uh, she's done amazing work and, and hope she enjoys, uh, I don't think she'll retire. That lady can't retire. She's always going to be busy, but wish, uh, Mary Ann well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Foley.
Good evening. I feel, um, I feel kind of exhausted. I think you all must be exhausted by now. But, um, I do appreciate all of your efforts and all of the time you devote to our citizens and to our city. I do think Springfield is a good place to live and there's many, many caring people trying to make it better. And, um, we hear a lot of voices and I'm glad that we have this forum where we can hear voices of differing opinions. But I feel there, there is the silent majority, the silent majority of people who really are working together and thinking positive about our future and doing things to make things better. Um, I do have two issues that, that I am concerned about, especially looking ahead to the next several months. And one is housing and shelter for our neighbors who don't have housing and shelter and especially with the cold months approaching. So I'd appreciate any updates you can give now or in the future as we're approaching the cold months. And then the second issue would be food insecurity for our neighbors who, um, yeah, who lack food or enough food to get them through the week or through the month. I have, um, a sense that this coming winter could be a very hard winter on many, many people in our community. So just thinking ahead to how we can be proactive regarding those issues. And, um, in closing, just thank you again for all you do. You're greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Hey, that's the end of our comments that we have cards for. Um, start reverse with Ms. Peg's, uh, question. I think there's definitely items on the agenda tonight that address, uh, cities effort in the next three, four months of, uh, with the cold snap coming. So on our agenda tonight, we're addressing part of your concern about, uh, homelessness and shelter, uh, over the winter time. But, um, I want to go ahead and allow, um, some, I guess, I mean, I'm, there's so many comments made. This, the money, the gentleman was speaking about the jail money, this tax money, that is not city income. That's not city budget money. Mr. Ramey, leave. That's, that's, yeah, that's nothing to do with us. Uh, I do believe we need a new jail. I believe we need a humane, but humanely built jail, uh, that can offer a lot of programs. But that sales tax is, was not a vote that we, we made, but that is something that, uh, the county's, uh, under their purview and responsibility. So that you want to add into the.
Yeah, I did want to speak to that. Um, uh, there are several times that we have set and provided like so many resources for students. And, um, I really encourage families to just Google after school activities or go to the Springfield City School District's website. There are, um, makerspace. There are all kinds of things to do after school at the dome. Um, there's a new mentoring program. Um, there's my brother and my sister's keepers. There's everything that Eric DJ Swig Clark is doing. I think it is, is unfair to say that nothing is available for kids when you have people who are building programs, again, such as Eric Clark out of his own pocket that are really flourishing and providing so many things for kids to do. Um, could we be doing more? Absolutely. And I wanted to reiterate or ensure that I, my understanding was correct that in building the new facility, that will allow for the programming to reduce the recidivism or keep people from going back to jail. Um, and help with those issues of the mental health and the, um, drug addiction. So it's not just to incarcerate, it's to serve as well. Is that correct, Mayor Rue?
That's what I understood.
Okay. So that would be a lot of preventative pieces there. So.
Yeah, also just to bring up, um, the buses as well. Did you want to speak to the jails again?
Yes.
Okay. If we're just talking jails, I'll bring up us.
To the, uh, lady who raised issues about operational problems at the jail. Again, the jail is operated by Clark County. The city has no jurisdiction whatsoever in any fashion, any way for the operation of the jail or the maintenance of the jail. So I want to encourage you to go to the Clark County Board of Commissioners meeting and raise the issues with them. Raising them with us does no good because we have no authority over the jail. We have no funding associated with the jail. So if you have concerns about the jail or the cost of it or operational issues, you need to take it to the Clark County Board of Commissioners, not to this city commission because we have nothing to do with the jail. Thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted to build upon what Commissioner Brown was talking about with youth resources and just share out a few more. So Springfield Promise Neighborhood, also a good resource to go through. National Trails and Parks, another good resource for youth. And United Way's website also has a plethora of different resources for folks in this community.
Uh, concerning the field trips buses, I agree with, uh, I think Diane Daniels brought it up two weeks ago about numbering the vans. I think it is a good idea and I, I asked the city manager to contact the transportation company that's running, uh, the vans to do that. So I'm going to ask again that we'd follow up to get it done. We agree. It's, it's a good move and obviously legally they should be. Um, numbered. Dave?
That regard, would a motion from this body directing you to inquire about that give you a little more authority when you speak to the service?
No, not necessarily. I mean, I know Jason By has been in conversations with Field, uh, Via, who is the operator of that. So I don't think a motion from the commission is necessary.
I just want to make sure that the company understands that I think all five of us up here believe that's a good idea and something they ought to be looking seriously at doing as soon as possible.
I think that's been communicated to them.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank, thank you. Yeah, of course.
Um, I, I'll just add to that as well. I agree. But, um, I do think it's important for you to keep this feedback coming. Uh, the company is completely separate from the city and we don't employ any of them. We don't own any of, any of those vans. I know you saw, I think offender on one of them was broken. Keep that feedback coming, um, because it's easier for us to pass it on to them.
Um, I think Ms. Skinner brought up the, the idea of the police station. If, uh, if and when the jail is built, you want to answer that question?
Yeah. So specifically, you know, the city police division understands that with the county and the jail movement, uh, we need to evaluate our space needs. We had a consultant look at our current space and really look at what we need. I'll tell you the three biggest areas that eat up the largest square footage. Property room, training space and secure parking for the fleet are the three biggest square footages that are needed for that. Um, I, uh, want our police division to stay in the downtown in the core of our community because just as the sheriff's looking how they can serve best, the core of our community is central to what we serve. Um, and then we'll also continue, we actually had a conversation. Um, I had a conversation with the county, uh, one of the commissioners, specifically at the existing building. The jail piece of that building would need to come down. Uh, but is there an opportunity if the administrative wing, uh, can stay? Um, would, would that fit our space needs? So we're going to continue to evaluate that. Understand even when the county says go on the jail, uh, we're looking at a four-year to five-year project completion date, uh, with design and then actual construction. And so, uh, but we've already been evaluating and looking what our space needs are. Staying in downtown and we will evaluate the current space and if there's opportunities to stay there. Um, and then making sure that we fit the needs of our police division, serving our community.
And as you're looking for those opportunities, you're looking within the existing facilities we do have within the city. Make the best, uh, best and most economical use of our. Make the best, best and most economical use of our. Dr. Ashtraw, you wanted to say something to Ms. Foley's comments about food security?
Both in terms of the federal housing money and in terms of the food bank. I was at a function this morning and happened to talk with the representative of Second Harvest Food Bank here in the city. And what she told me was that the food that they are scheduled to receive as of now, they believe they will receive. But because of the government shutdown, they've been advised that any future shipments may not occur. So it's a very difficult period for them. They will be able to get more that they've ordered. But beyond what they've ordered to date, when the government shut down, they don't know. And apparently won't know until decision is made in terms of what to do with the federal government. On the housing side, it's a very similar picture. Our federal money, our block grant money, is tied up at the federal level. And with the federal government shut down, we're going to get what we think, we think we're going to get. The entitlement we've received and applied for to date. But anything beyond that is very much a question mark. So we will be getting some. How much? We don't know. And when? We don't know because of the federal government shutdown. So that's where those two big areas stand, at least as of this morning when I talked to some folks.
And do you have answers to some of the questions?
I think the biggest one was the police division and what's going to go there. As you addressed, we do have an item on the agenda tonight that we'll speak to about homelessness and specifically in the colder weather. Permit or building regulations issue. I will have Logan follow up with you after the meeting to discuss that, the building permit side. And then?
Can you continue the data center too?
What's that?
Speak to the data center, Ms. Recup.
Yeah, as far as the data center is concerned, I mean, those are things that are governed through the Building Regulations Division, which ultimately is the Ohio Basic Building Code and the requirements set forth under the Ohio Basic Building Code for the construction and development. Obviously, we know data centers are something that has continued to be built throughout Ohio. And they're actually at the state legislature. They have looked at whether they do some sort of moratorium or pause on the expansion of data centers throughout Ohio just because of the rapid construction of those and certainly the use of resources such as power being a big one. And so, you know, as far as the construction of the one that's there, they've done everything lawfully under the basic building code that is established by Ohio.
Thank you. Is there any other comments that the commissioners would like to make, Dr. Ashtraw?
Tonight, I, along with my fellow commissioners, was accused, we have been accused of committing criminal acts, federal criminal acts. You will be hearing from my personal attorney. I will not have you accuse me in public with no facts to support your case. We'll see you in court. I beg your pardon.
Please don't speak. Okay. We're going to move on with the business portion of our meeting and go ahead.
There was one comment asking about agenda. When we received the agenda and researching, yeah, researching legis, everything on it. We received the agenda on Friday afternoon, same one that you received. I can't speak to how anyone else reviews everything, but we have ample time to read through it, click through everything that's online, like the whole packet's online. So this, we don't just get like PDF like this. I personally read through all of them, and if I have follow-up questions, I ask the city manager. Sometimes you have questions. Sometimes if it's something like buying a snowplow, you don't, so. And then the other thing, you spoke regarding the United Nations and immigrant, immigrants mentioned welcoming city. Just again, we're not a welcoming city. We never have been. If you go to their website, we're not. We're not on their website. We don't pay for it. We haven't been certified. We never went through the process. However, if you go to Dayton downtown, they actually publish themselves as a welcoming city. They have gone through the process. They are on the website for Welcoming America.
I think that there may be a discrepancy there. She's talking sanctuary city, but, right. But she was, she specified a welcoming city.
Oh, we're not a welcoming city for Welcoming America?
Through the ordinance, eh?
Yeah.
Okay. But there was a, I don't want, I don't want us, yes, I don't want us, right. But I don't want to sit here and act like that language has never been used by the commission. You know what I mean?
Yes.
So I don't, I don't, kind of felt like, I don't know. I just wanted to make sure that you know that we understand what you're saying, but we've never been a sanctuary city. And I did want to update, right, I know you didn't.
Please.
So I just wanted to update and say that, to add to that. Thank you.
We are a council manager form of government, which means the staff members, the four staff members we hire are hired to manage the city. And the council oversees manager, the senior staff. And that's how things are set up. So these folks are hired with the ability to bring decisions to the council. And then we affirm those decisions. We have questions about the decisions. That's when we ask. Each one of us have have talked to our senior staff members to discuss that. But us individually, in this form of government, in any city that has this form of government, does not run or manage, excuse me, does not manage the city. But we hold those who manage the city accountable. So yes, does stop with us. At the same point, we do rely on those that we hire to make good decisions and and make decisions that we can question, and then they have answers for. And I believe anytime that any of our citizens or folks that have had questions or any of our staff members, I've heard good answers that has come from them and elaborate, or if you don't agree with it, you can still get your answer. So that's, that's something that we do, just so you understand that. Now we're going to continue with our business portion of the meeting. We'll go on with our first readings.
Amending Ordinance Number 91-90 passed March 12, 1991, and commonly known as the Codified Ordinances of the City of Springfield, Ohio, by amending certain provisions of Section 1501.01 entitled Ohio Fire Code Adoption and Section 1503.10, now entitled Schedule of Fees and Rulemaking Authority. Authorizing the city manager to enter into Amendment Number One to the contract with Denergy Energy Services East LLC to include an account for un-metered streetlights. Authorizing the city manager to enter into Amendment Number One to the Brownfield Remediation Program Subrecipient Agreement with Clark County Land Reutilization Corporation to remove Zero Sunset Avenue and reduce funding accepted for environmental assessments by $56,500 for a total agreement amount not to exceed $342,374. Authorizing the city manager to enter into an amendment number two to the contract with Max solve Environmental and Safety Consultants for environmental consulting services to amend the scope of services by removing Zero Sunset Avenue. Confirming and approving the execution of grant agreements with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for the 2025 Community Development Block Grant in an amount of $1,740,154 and 2025 Emergency Solutions Grant in an amount of $155,047 and the 2025 Home Program in an amount of $439,153.88. Authorizing the city manager, law director, community development director, and finance director to do all things they deem necessary to implement, operate, and administer the city's Community Development Block Grant Program, Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and Home Program for the 2025 fiscal year. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a subrecipient funding agreement with the Nehemiah Foundation to provide CDBG CV funding for the Faith Community Crisis Response Team in an amount not to exceed $28,499.95 for the period of October 1, 2025 through April 1, 2026, and confirming and approving related expenditures incurred from October 1, 2025. Authorizing Amendment Number Two to the contract with Ferguson Enterprises LLC doing business as Ferguson Water Works for the purchase of water meter equipment to modify the pricing structure. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a development incentive agreement, Single Family Residential Development, to provide water and sewer services to real property outside the city limits located at 1112 Villa Road. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a development incentive agreement, Single Family Residential Development, to provide for sewer services for real property outside the city limits located at 2600 Marinette Drive.
Thank you. I'd like the city manager to explain several of the first readings.
Yes, Commissioner, the first one I'm going to talk about is 230-25, which is amending the two sections, 1501.01 and Section 1503.10. 1501.01 deals specifically with food trucks in our community, and it allows or formalizes a process for the inspections from our fire rescue division. And so right now, food trucks are required that health department permit. But oftentimes, we get called in to further the inspection because there's, you know, fryers, hoods, those types of things that we have to come and look at. And right now, there is no formal process or mechanism for that. So this allows us or establishes that permitting process through our fire rescue division. And then 1503.10 allows the fire chief to recommend fees for services that are provided that are not part of the core emergency services that the fire rescue division ends up doing and makes those recommendations where they are then generalized by the city manager. Some examples of that, fire alarms and, you know, repeat fire alarm offenders where maybe a business that has a fire alarm set up for their establishment, and they know there's an issue or a problem with that, and they do not fix it. And then we are continually being called out to fire alarms that are not legitimate because it has not been maintained properly. Non-emergent and non-transport runs that occur at many of our nursing facilities throughout our community. Oftentimes, we are called on runs. Again, we are an emergency service provider. And so we're called on non-emergent and non-transport type runs. And then another example is underground storage tank inspection. So we inspect underground storage tanks and the installation of those. And this allows us, again, to set a fee structure that is commiserate with what we are providing as a service. I would like to speak, I'm going to ask Logan Cobb's to speak to 232-25. But I will say again, one of the things that's been talked about here in the last several meetings is, you know, what are we doing to help address the homelessness situation specifically with cold weather coming in our community? And so partnership that was established after COVID in partnership with the Nehemiah Foundation, the establishment of the Faith Community Crisis Response Team, working with them. Commend Logan Cobb's for her efforts in collaborating and partnering with organizations. And she'll talk to with new leadership at the Salvation Army and the use or the ability to utilize the facility for the cold weather as well. So with that, Logan?
Thank you, Brian. Mayor Rue, commissioners, good evening. Logan Cobb's Director of Community Development. So I am really excited to have this item before you this evening. To Brian's point, over the last several weeks, my team, myself included, have fielded many questions from the community as you all have on what's the plan. I know the mayor, the city manager, and really all of you as a whole have been following our progress closely, excuse me, to ensure that we have a solid game plan in place. So I definitely just want to thank you all in the community as a whole for, you know, your patience and your trust as we work through these, these details. So tonight, we are recommending, and this is regarding item number 232-25, we're recommending the $28,499.95 in funding be awarded to the Nehemiah Foundation to operate a warming shelter this winter. I'll share some very high-level details with you because I know you have some additional questions. So I'll share some that may be top of mind with you. The shelter would be located at the Salvation Army, which is located at 15 South Plum Street. So just a hop, skip, and a jump away from where we sit and stand. Once temperatures reach 32 degrees or below, which are freezing temperatures, the shelter would open from 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM. With that, guests will be provided dinner and breakfast daily. During extreme cold events, so we're talking single digits, the shelter will shift to 24/7 operation. When conditions improve, those would resume back to the regularly scheduled times of 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM. While I have the mic, I do just want to express just sincere gratitude to the Nehemiah Foundation and the Salvation Army for their continued partnership in this space, for the work that they do and their willingness to serve our community in this capacity. Of course, I'll stand by for any questions, but I do just want to recognize that I saw, oh, there they are, majors. Dave and Pam, the new majors for the Salvation Army here in Springfield are present, as well as Aaron Roy's in the back there and Amy Willman as well with the Nehemiah Foundation, who could also speak to any specific questions you all may have.
Is there any specific questions from commissioners on this, Dr. Ashtraw?
First of all, our thanks to Nehemiah and to the Salvation Army for providing these critical services to some of our citizens. My concern is the funding. And Brian, if the federal money doesn't come through or we don't get as much as we're anticipating, where does that leave?
So specifically, these dollars are CDBG CV funds, so theoretically, they're there. We may, right now, because the federal government shutdown, may not be able to seek reimbursement for those dollars. And understand that these are, it's a not to exceed or up to amount too, so it's only cost incurred in operating. Let's, fingers crossed, and we have a mild winter and we don't have to utilize all of that funding. We wouldn't have to utilize all that. But we would have to front those dollars out of our general fund anyway and then seek reimbursement after the dollar's been expended. So the risk is if the federal government shutdown continues and we're not able to seek reimbursement, we carry those costs out of the the general fund.
Out of our local, local dollars.
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to know what the capacity is. Do we know how many people we can take? And then the second question, as I shared with Mayor Rue, is is there going to be a separated area for women and children versus men? I was able to go to the Warming Center last year, and I just think that that's important to address and think through.
I'll go ahead and share. Evening, everyone. So, yeah.
Let's just say, this is Aaron Roy. He works with the Nehemiah Foundation. He's been boots on the ground in the homeless situation all last year and worked with Barron as well and Barron's effort as well. Go ahead. Thank you.
So I'm super excited to be working with the Salvation Army and ShelterDing and others in this collaboration. To answer your question, there is going to be, we actually just talked today. Major David had shared that there is space and room for those that are women and children so that we can separate them. Now, this is going to be a low-barrier shelter, so basically signing a name and coming in. We don't have a lot of those restrictions or any things like that. But because we're working with Springfield PD, the Fire Department, all these different entities, we're going to really try to make sure that it's a safe, warm place for everybody. But we are thinking about children. We also have, which I'm super excited about, case management that will be on site so that when people come in who some would say are chronically homeless, they don't want to enter into shelter. But in these times of, of to enter into shelter, but in these times of cold weather, if they start to change their mind, we have case management where we can get them into shelter and more permanent housing, as well as the need, mental health need, physical health need, those type.
And Commissioner Tack, to your, the first part of your question, I will have to look into what their formal, the Salvation Army's formal occupancy load is, e.g., how many folks can be in that area? However, if you've visited their facility, they have a wonderful open space, a very large gymnasium that fits quite a few people, but I'll get that exact number for you, and circle back.
We've also had up to a hundred people in that space because of how it's open, but everything that we've done in the past with Salvation Army has been up to code, meaning we have fire walk, we have wipe downs of common spaces, we try to go by essentially the EMA code of contact, code of contact. So we're going to do everything we can to make sure that our unsheltered neighbors are safe and warm, but also make sure we're not doing anything dangerous. So pray for us.
Thank you, Dr. Estram.
I have a question on item two thirty dash two five. I'm going to make an assumption, but I want to make sure that you confirm it. While, next time, we will be looking at passing legislation to put fire code regulations into place for food trucks. There are already health district rules and regs in place for food trucks, but again, we don't enforce those as the city, those are enforced by the health district. Am I correct in making that assumption?
Yes, the combined health district does have a permit process for food trucks to make sure for safe food delivery.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are there comments from the audience on first readings only? Okay, we'll continue with second readings? You're going to speak?
I lost my place, guys. I had to run out, take the emergency phone call. So, two three two dash two five, that's where we're talking about now. I'm sorry, I lost, I lost my place. Just got a phone call I didn't want to get, but he passed. Everybody knows I had the warming this year, and very tach, to say the least, but we got it done. I know Aaron very well. He's probably one of the most stand up guys I know, and Brian and I met this week, kind of knew the plan. I just had a couple of questions. They, is it going to be open, where did Aaron go? Is it going to be open twenty four hours?
It's going to be open twenty four hours a day when it becomes in a situation, I believe at twenty below or something like that.
Single digits.
Single digits.
So, single digits. Thirty two and below will be from six P M. to eight A M., so overnight shelter when it's hits that thirty two.
So below freezing, freezing and below, they're going to, okay, because that's very important to me anyway.
Breakfast and dinner will be included in that, okay?
Yeah.
I just wanted to add that. Once it hits single digits, then it'll be open twenty four hours.
Okay, so, okay, eight A M., they're going to be out?
Yes.
Okay. We really need to think about where they're going to go. Think about that. And the twenty eight thousand four hundred ninety nine ninety five, that is just the amount of this grant. You have other funds to be able to rely on, correct? Okay, I mean, well, let's all get together. I can assure you that that's not going to do it.
Make sure we, anybody needs to make your questions directed towards the Commission, and if there's other side meetings that need to happen concerning this, we can absolutely have them.
Yeah, I just know that, we'll just round that to thirty thousand dollars. That's not even going to touch it.
Right.
I mean, to do it.
It's going to touch it, but it's not enough. We hear you.
Right, but what a wonderful thing that everybody is getting together now, and it's step one, you know? I want to see what step ten's going to look like.
Yeah.
You know, for the future, and of course, Aaron, we've had several conversations, Rob and I have had conversations, Brian and I have had conversations, anything I can do. I hope to be really busy after January and not have a whole lot of time for it, but I'll do whatever I can. The, in the language of the grant, I had a couple of questions real quick. Okay, I apologize, guys. In section twenty six, on the insurance and risk management, A two, it's all the different insurances and things like that. Are these certificates of insurance going to be available for the public to view?
I'm looking to speci, can you say the section you're in again?
Section twenty six, A two. It's just one of the different liability, it's the abuse slash molestation or sexual misconduct liability insurance of a million per claim, now, a million per aggregate by endorsement or standalone.
Yeah, so these are coverages, the, if you read the A part throughout the term, and these are federal requirements with the dollars that come with this, the sub recipient, so Nehemiah being the sub recipient, shall maintain with insurers authorized to do business in Ohio these things. So they would have to submit that they have secured these different insurances. So yes, they would be a public record or public document.
Okay.
But they, the sub recipient is responsible for ensuring that they have these coverages.
Yeah, and I noticed that the, the city shall be named as an additional on it to cover the city in case something like that would happen, and, but this is going to just be a blanket? I guess I need to, I want to understand the insurance more, and maybe that's something that, you know, we can get together, you know, to, it took me a long time to read through this, and I don't. And my other question is, is there any other entity other than the Nehemiah Foundation that has submitted paperwork to be considered for this money?
Again, Nehemiah was established as a partner organization or agency after COVID to establish the crisis, the Faith Crisis Response Team, and so we're utilizing that same resource here for these dollars to provide this operation during this time.
Okay, is it capped at this? Is this just for this one grant? Will they be eligible for any more community block development grant money?
They can certainly apply for other dollars when we put out RFPs, as they have done in the past, where they've gone through the request for proposal process. I believe there was an award made back a couple meetings ago, maybe a couple months ago, that three entities were awarded based off of a request for proposal that was put out for entities to secure.
I guess that's, that was what my question was, the previous stuff that we had discussed, that's not coming out of their twenty eight?
No.
Okay, all right. Hey, I applaud Aaron for stepping up, I applaud the city for stepping up, and at the end of the day, man, let's all work together and just make sure that we take care of what we can do. We can set the pace for other communities and what we do here, and it just does my heart good to know that now we're addressing it as a group, and I'll do anything I can to help, help our unsheltered. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Aaron. We'll continue, Dr. Estram.
I'm sorry, I meant to ask questions about item two thirty three dash twenty five and two thirty four dash twenty five, the development incentive agreements. As a matter of practice, we do not extend sewer or water services outside the city, but as I recall from a discussion you and I had, these services were already in place, but the ownership of these properties has changed. Do I remember that correctly?
Yes, so when properties are not contiguous to the city, and our services are available and they can connect, they enter into these development and incentive agreements, these specific are single family residents, one is for water and sewer, the other one is just for sewer services, but they are transfer of ownership. So they were already connected, and then the property transferred through a sale, and so the new owners are entering into that D I A.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you, we'll continue on with second readings. Is this about first readings? Okay, please. Just go ahead and.
Could you step up to the mic, the mic, please? Thank you, Melissa. The one forty three dash two five.
Yes.
What is that about?
So we, for all of our city facilities, obviously, we have an electric supply, so we shop out the rates to make sure that we're getting the most efficient, effective rate for the electric services that we do. We had done this back for city facilities back in May and entered into the contract with the Dyna G Energy Services. They were able to take, so we, we own a portion of our streetlights downtown, the decorative streetlights out at Next Edge, those are city owned, and the company was able to come back and look at those unmetred lights and give us a better rate for the services, the electric service that's supplying to those.
Okay, I just had one other question about the one twenty seven to twenty two. What, what water meter, like, for what structure?
Say that again.
What structure are they wanting these water meters?
Oh, these are for replacement of water meters throughout the city. So we are working through a program, our water meter technology is outdated, and so we have to go in and replace. So commercial residential, we purchase these through the Ferguson. This specific item just modifies the pricing structure, doesn't change the cost of it, but goes from a lump sum to a line item price on that. But again, we are in the process of replacing all of our water meters because of the outdated technology.
And are they smart?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Real quick, Mayor, City Commissioners, as it relates to the warming shelter, obviously, this is going to be, we need the whole community working with us, so I've put on both of the pedestals here some training and orientation that we're doing for volunteers, and so we want to equip our volunteers to be able to serve well and love well a very underserved demographic and a needy demographic. So if you want to pick these up, this is just one of many, we're going to have probably three, four, or five of these orientations and trainings as we lead up to the colder months. So if you want to serve, and there's many ways that you can serve, everything from dropping off food to come in and actually serving meals to just setting with people and playing Uno, whatever it may be, cleanup crew, setup crew, we need folks, but we also want to get you ready and prepared and put you in the right place so that you can use your gifts and passions. So you can hand these out, they're on both pedestals, and you could let people know. Thank you.
Aaron, before you go, just for the record, can you read off a few of those so that it goes on our record, please?
Yeah, so our first one we have coming up October tenth, and we have a seven thirty A M. to nine, meals are provided at all of these, so we get to feed you, a twelve to one thirty, and a five thirty to seven on October tenth. We provide three of them because we know you guys are busy and folks have jobs, but if you can get away for an hour and a half, I promise you it'll be worth your time, and you get fed, and we could really work together in serving our unsheltered neighbors. So October tenth, seven thirty to nine A M., twelve P M. to one thirty P M., five thirty P M. to seven P M.
Thank you.
Thank you. Continuous. You have a question about first readings? Okay, we're doing first readings right now. That's okay, and just so everybody understands, first readings will be second readings in the next meeting, so we'll have a chance to ask questions about these when we vote on them to pass. Now we'll continue on second readings, and once it comes up, you'll be able to speak in a second.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Rumpke of Ohio Incorporated for the city's twenty twenty five collection of bagged leaves program for an amount not to exceed eighty two thousand one dollar.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Are there comments from Commissioners? Dr. Estram?
Wondering if you or Mr. Moore might give us the dates again? And Mr. Moore, as I recall, you said any kind of bag, grocery bag, paper bag, garbage bag, any of those are acceptable for pickup?
Excuse me, yes, any kind of bag is acceptable, and we'd like to remind people, you do not need to go to Lowe's or Home Depot and buy expensive bags for this. And the pickup dates are November eighth and December sixth. We encourage residents to have the bags out to the curb before six A M., because when they come to town, they hit hard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Comments about this only? Go ahead.
Yes, I just had a question. This, it says eighty two thousand dollars for picking up leaves. For the homeless, not to exceed twenty eight thousand four hundred ninety nine dollars and ninety five.
Yes.
That seems to be a priority problem. I oppose the eighty two thousand dollars for bags. I think that should go to.
Thank you.
Would just add here that these are different funding sources, so paid for bagged leaves comes out of our stormwater revenue fund, which prohibits the leaves from going into our storm sewer, that's how the stormwater fund pays for that.
And what's the, what's the money, again, that we use for supporting the homeless community and the agencies doing that?
We're using our HUD entitlement dollars for those.
Okay.
Can you use the money for the leaves on?
We cannot, no, because that's a rate.
Can you explain that?
Correct, so for our water, sewer, and stormwater funds, that's your utility bill that residents who utilize those services are paying each month. So when we have expenditures out of our water fund, our sewer fund, or stormwater fund, those expenditures have to be related to providing that service.
Thank you. Other comments about bagged leaves?
I think it's important to note that that's a matter of state law, not a decision we make, in terms of the utilizing of funds from those different funds that are funds available.
Certainly, Commissioner, that's what we're audited on annually, and that's generally accepted accounting principles, fund accounting, and that funnels down to the local government.
And again, I want you to understand that I at least get what you're saying, you know what I mean? No shade, but, I mean, I get it, but I also understand, like, if we get all the sewers backed up, that's another thing as well, so, but I do understand your concern with that.
My question, the eighty two thousand and one dollar, that was, that was put up for bid, and I'm assuming Rumpke's the only one to even submit a bid?
They were the only ones to.
Yes, they. That's, how sad is that?
There was no other.
It used to be, we used to get two bids usually, one waste management, one Rumpke Waste Management, hasn't bid probably the last three or four years.
Is it safe to say that this is what they spend every year for this?
It's, it's pretty consistent, I believe, in the pricing.
Um, last year was seventy seven thousand eight hundred seventy three, so a slight increase.
So we'll say average seventy five thousand a year. That buys a lot of equipment, and by, you know, that pays some salaries for some city workers, or, you know, I know that there's currently layoffs going on, maybe they could transfer to the leaf grinding department, and we could, have they even looked at that? I'm sure they have.
Yeah, we, we do actually look at all the different services we provide, and what's more efficient and effective in-house versus out of house. You look at Moorfield Township, Moorfield Township does brush pickup, they have a crew that they pay, I would guess that the two to three workers that they have working on that crew and that piece of equipment far exceeds the seventy five to eighty five thousand average cost for that. So yes, we do evaluate what makes most sense in-house and what makes most sense to bid out.
Right, because I like Melissa there, I'm sitting there, and I'm looking, and I'm like, the same thing going through my head, but I understand, you know, I'm learning more every day about how government works, but I'm thinking, man, that's just, that's a tragedy that we're spending eighty two thousand dollars upfront to pick up leaves and twenty eight thousand so far for homeless, so I, I think it's good to communicate that so people understand that, that see this.
Well, and I understand too, so the agreement, the twenty eight thousand is to operate the warming shelter for the winter. We have other funds that were done through RFPs that have been awarded out to Sheltered Inc. that have been awarded out to Sheltered Inc. Nehemiah has another grant that is for their Faith Crisis Response Team for outside of the warming shelter operation. So the $28,000 isn't the only dollar amount that we've put towards homelessness, so.
Without holding you to a concrete figure, because you don't have it in front of you, I'm sure, how much total does the city contribute financially to helping the homeless?
Actually, I think Logan can probably give you a pretty close approximate number.
Yeah, just round numbers. So our Emergency Solutions Grant, we receive approximately $160,000. That is for homelessness and homelessness prevention. So those funds have to be used there. We can't use those on bag leaf pickup, right? So that's what our Finance Director was referencing earlier. CDBG funds are our most flexible, most flexible pot of money. We receive anywhere between 1.7 and 1.8 mil. I believe around December, we awarded around $200,000 specifically for comprehensive solutions to address homelessness. So throughout the year, we put out various RFPs. But again, we have designated funds for homelessness and homelessness prevention and then use CDBG funds to supplement that as well. CDBG CV funds were just another federal funding source that we utilized for this specific endeavor.
Just, just for clarity though, that's what I, I wanted people to understand that a lot more than $28,000, whatever, $28,499.95 went into helping take care of the homeless.
Yes, this is correct.
Just the warming shelter effort. Just the warming, which it says. I want to make sure we're clear. It says the warming shelter, we're operating that. Okay, we need to move on. But we are doing what we can here. Is there other comments? We'll go ahead and call for a vote.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the forgiveness of certain interest and other charges and release of the city's mortgage with the Mental Health and Recovery Board of Clark, Green and Madison Counties.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, like Brian or Katie to go ahead and explain what's being forgiven and how it's being.
Yeah, we had been able to utilize both home funds and NSP 2, which is Neighborhood Stabilization Program dollars, to help assist in the development of properties, specifically building residence that was done. The project was done by the Mental Health and Recovery Board of Clark, Green and Madison Counties. They are now working to transfer those properties to Mental Health Services who will continue to utilize those residents to provide shelter, residence to those within their programs. And so as a part of these funds, it provides us the ability to forgive those federal funds, that mortgage on that so that they can continue to provide those great services to our community that both Mental Health Recovery Board and now Mental Health Services will continue for our community.
These are granted funds into the city that we redistribute out.
Yes, these are federal dollars.
Federal dollars redistributed out. Okay, the comments from Commissioners? From the audience?
Good evening, my name is Steve Hirdred. I'm just curious, so is this money owed to the city or money owed by the city?
These are funds that we received from the federal government for the purposes of building affordable housing and working with providers like Mental Health Recovery Board and Mental Health Services to carry out program of work within our community. And so we, when this happened, we did a RFP or request out and Mental Health Recovery Board had reached out to us. This was actually back in 2015, I believe, was when this was originally funded from the federal dollars. And Mental Health Recovery Board used those program dollars as a sub recipient to build houses that are used for individuals that are provided services through Mental Health Recovery Board. They are now transitioning the ownership of those homes to Mental Health Services who will continue to provide that for individuals in our community requiring those mental health services.
So what's the dollar amount? Because I've noticed in.
The HUD amount, yeah, the HUD amount that we provided or the home funds amount was $275,000. And then the NSP 2 dollars were $27,500 for a total of $302,500, which again was used to build properties. And these are all west of the Springfield Regional Medical Center. So the neighborhood west of that.
So 302, the 302,500, is that the amount that you're voting on to forgive?
Yes.
That's still due to the city?
Yes. It's, it's federal grant dollars that, yes, we put into a program.
Is that what you're saying? You're going to give this money back or is this money? You know, like, have you deposited this money and now you don't?
No, we provided this money. Mental Health Recovery Board utilized these dollars to build these homes.
Okay, so you like loaned it per se to the Mental Health Recovery?
Yeah, and then we have the ability under the federal programs to forgive those loan amounts so that they're not paying us back. They're putting money back in and continuing the services that they're providing. Without these dollars, they would not have been able to build these homes and they would not be able to continue the services that they provide if they're having to pay them back.
Well, with, and I'm just curious, because with all of the recent discussions that I've heard in the last couple of meetings in regards to the homeless and, you know, the upcoming winter, instead of releasing the entire 302,000, you know, you can pick a dollar amount. If you release, say, 250 of that, transferring the other 50 or 52,000, you know, to the homeless project, you know, a dollar amount of that nature of why, you know, just.
Again, I think these dollars, again, were invested back in 2015 in our community for another important component of, that ties into homelessness with Mental Health Services and so forth. And I think by continuing to be good partners with Mental Health Recovery Board and Mental Health Services by forgiving the loan amount, was very prudent with the dollars that we spent here.
Okay. I'm not sure if I agree, but thank you.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Okay, permission to conclude the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, call roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.